We can start late, but we can't even start thirty seconds early. So, we'd like to call to order and welcome everyone to our regular meeting of the West Valley City Council this July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, six-thirty P. M. in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harman, Councilmember Hune, myself, Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Norfeld. We're also joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. Our opening ceremony today will be presented by Councilmember Christensen, and I'll turn the time to him.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, today, as we got our mail out of our mailbox, there were a couple of bright-yellow envelopes in it. Those bright-yellow envelopes for me and my wife are now out in the county ballot drop box. And I thought, you know, what does this mean? To vote for our city leadership? We're, we do see a lot of news and people trying to define what's a, what's a citizen? Why should you be a citizen? Well, can you be a citizen if you had somebody of cross-blood somewhere, somewhere in your ancestry? And I thought, well, mine goes back to the Magna Carta, that I can trace it back. My wife's side also goes back to the Magna Carta, but she was on the other side of the Magna Carta. She was in the royal blood. I wasn't. So what does that mean? And why, why is it important? Voting, taking part in the city, being here, expressing your opinion to us, who you have selected to represent you. That's what being a citizen is all about. Yes, we do some things like we will in just a minute, stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag. But, you know, when I worked in Mexico, when they pledged allegiance to their flag, I pledged right along with them. Didn't change my citizenship, but it made me a part of what was going on there. So think about that and think about the opportunity you have to vote and to make your choice known. And as you think about that, let's stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We now have the approval of our minutes for July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Turn them to the council for approval and discussion.
Move to approve the minutes of July eighth.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Those pass. All right, we now have a proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Night, Nights, and I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Harmon for the reading of that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Nights Month and August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, as August, as National Night Out, two thousand and twenty-five, in West Valley City. Whereas the West Valley City, whereas West Valley Cities tries to reinforce the importance of crime prevention awareness in the city, and crime prevention events have been planned throughout the month of August, and the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August fifth, entitled National Night Out. And the Forty-Second Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for West Valley City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And the mayor and West Valley City Council of West Valley City do hereby determine that it is essential that all citizens of West Valley City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in West Valley City. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby proclaim August as Neighborhood Nights Month and August fifth as National Night Out, two thousand and twenty-five, in West Valley City, and encourage residents to participate in the various activities taking place throughout the city in the month of August. Signed, the mayor.
Thank you. We have some people here to accept the National Night Out award. If you would come up and shake the hands of the council, and then we'll have a photo.
You can answer it if you want, and we can just... Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, and we really do appreciate all those who take the time and the effort to put together these Neighborhood Night Out activities, so thank you. We will now expect, accept public comment. Public comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers shall not expect a debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, city council, and city staff may respond after the comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, and members of the city council. So Speaker one.
Good evening. My name is Kate Ruffner. I'm the board president of the West Valley Arts Foundation, and I'm also a resident of West Valley City. It's hard to believe it's been a year since we first approached you about taking over the West Valley Performing Arts Center. What started as a community rescue mission has become something remarkable. And tonight, we're here to share what the theater provides the community and ask for your continued partnership with an appropriation. We believe a partnership is warranted because of three primary benefits of having a theater like this in West Valley City. Those are vibrance, and economic influence, and stability. First, vibrance. Over this past year, we've seen firsthand how this theater brings vibrance to our community. This space has hosted sold-out crowds for our shows, neighborhood block parties, art exhibits, fellow businesses, West Valley Arts fan clubs, and students from our summer camps. Vibrance brings connection and community and citizenship, which brings economic influence. We're making a real economic impact. Every show brings people to West Valley City who shop, eat, and discover what West Valley has to offer. Many of them come from other cities and leave as advocates for what we're building here. In fact, we've received multiple donations from grantors, corporate partners, and an especially important pair of donors who have offered to match every dollar the city appropriates to us. That's a double match. I am happy to provide letters of intent that demonstrate the commitment these donors feel toward our organization. Finally, we're providing something that potential citizens value: stability. Theater signals that West Valley City invests in quality of life beyond basic services. Families researching where to move often look for communities that offer cultural amenities. It suggests a place where people want to stay long-term, invest, and grow, not just pass through. A year ago, you believed in our vision for vibrance, economic influence, and stability. Six months ago, you trusted us with the building. Today, we're proving that investment was wise. This appropriation will secure what we've built together and ensure West Valley Arts continues serving our community for decades. We are eager to continue to provide vibrance, economic influence, and stability to West Valley's landscape. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker two.
Hello, my name is Jana Reese Cox, and I live in West Valley City District Four. I want to thank you all for supporting the arts in our city and for allowing the foundation to continue its mission to bring affordable theater to our community. The West Valley Performing Arts Center brings vibrancy to our city. One of the most joyful things I've ever witnessed was my five-year-old granddaughter bouncing down the stairs at intermission of Legally Blonde, dressed in sparkly pink and gushing about the show. This theater has been a vital part of my life from the moment it was built up through now. Five generations of my family have supported events at West Valley Performing Arts Center. The theater is a gathering place for us. As a volunteer at West Valley Arts, I have met so many wonderful people from our community, from the music teacher who spent her birthday at a show with her family, to the grandparents who gave a Christmas present of tickets to all nineteen of their grandchildren to the play that goes wrong, to a group of young parents who plan their date nights so they can see every show together. I've met people who come from West Valley and beyond because our casts are vibrant, diverse, talented, and represent our community. From our youngest to our oldest patrons, the overwhelming response is, "We're so glad you're here, and we're so glad your ticket prices are affordable." One of the ways we can keep ticket prices affordable is through city support. As the second-largest city in Utah, supporting a theater in the city gives cultural enrichment and social connection to our community. West Valley Arts appeals in some way to every demographic. The theater brings our community together, and it brings families together. It also brings others to our city to watch plays and to eat at nearby restaurants and shop at our stores. Having the theater here gives people a reason to spend their tax dollars in our city and brings people of all ages and economic statuses together. This includes not only theatrical experiences, but also for dance classes, summer camps, art exhibits, block parties, and other community events. The granddaughter I mentioned earlier is thrilled to be attending an acting summer camp at the theater in just a couple of weeks. And true to her personality, she's very excited about the glittery stage makeup and costumes. And I, and many others, have volunteered time and money to help keep the theater open because we believe it's a fundamental part of a thriving city. I'd also like to thank you for believing in West Valley Arts Foundation, and I ask you to invest in its continued future by appropriating three hundred thousand so the theater can continue to be a gathering place for our vibrant community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker three.
Mike Markham, I can't speak for these people because I have no culture. But Dawn had a good segue. I just wanted to thank everybody for their vote two weeks ago, no matter how it had gone or however you thought. But the important thing, like she said, is get out and vote. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Speaker four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's John Sweeney. I am the interim executive director of the West Valley Arts Foundation. I come to you not just as a representative, but as someone who believes deeply in the arts in this community. I was a member of the team at Hale Center Theater that created the reputation of impactful arts in West Valley City. I directed more shows on that stage than anyone else from nineteen ninety-nine until it left in two thousand and seventeen. I know I've made an impact in this community. I know that there is a void that West Valley City has felt from an economic development standpoint when Hale Center Theater left for Sandy. I believe that West Valley Arts Foundation can help fill that void. I've spoken with, in particular, with restaurant and bar owners in that area, and they are all very concerned about the loss of events that are occurring in that area, whether it's at the Maverick Center or if West Valley Arts were not able to continue. That has an economic impact. West Valley Arts Foundation is now in the early stages of becoming self-sufficient nonprofit, and it's no small task. What we've accomplished just over the past few months gives us real hope, not just for survival, but for growth and success, the same way that the Hale did. I know that you guys have believed in us, and that's why you gave us this opportunity, but it's early. We're beginning to see things happen. We're beginning to open the doors for larger and larger audiences. We bring in families, students, seniors, first-time theater-goers who have never been in West Valley City before and are getting their first opportunity. We bring safe entertainment, family-friendly entertainment, like Punchback, which opens on August eighth. Get your tickets at wvcarts.org. We bring people to West Valley, many for the first time. When they come to see a show, they stay for dinner, they go shopping, they get gas. And hey, maybe they want to move here, okay? That's economic impact. That's a community. We're proud to represent West Valley on and off the stage, but we are still building. We are working with local businesses, including Holiday Oil, Kid2Kid, Breeze Airways, and many others. But these relationships take time. We need the city's ongoing partnership to help us bridge this critical early period so that we can continue to grow into a self-sustaining vibrant arts organization. Your continued support in this year's budget is not just an investment in the arts, but an investment in West Valley's future. Thank you for your belief in what we do.
Thank you. Speaker five.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jim Vesok? Yes, I'm back. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to the gang conference. And so that's why I couldn't be here. When I was asked to go to it, I wasn't sure what I was going to. I thought it'd all be about gangs and all this different stuff. And there was lots of classes and lots of interesting things that had happened. After every class, we got to ask questions to instructors. And the one question that I asked each one of the instructors is if you had your legislators in front of you, what would you be asking for? And you would think the normal response, more police officers, more money. Every single one of them said, "Keep the victim advocate programs funded because they are being cut, and it's one of the easiest things for legislators to cut. We need to keep those programs funded because when they get the youth..." I was shocked. Eight, nine, and ten-year-olds are being recruited into gangs. I had no idea it was that young. But if you can help them that young, the dollars you're spending there will save us thousands and thousands of dollars on the back end. And like I said, every one of the classes we went to, that was the number-one thing that they said. And I thought that was great. Went to Chill with the Chief on Monday, and once again, it's, it was one of our biggest turnouts of the summer. And it's so great to see the little kids come up and, oh, that's actually the chief? And the smiles on their face and stuff, and her talking to these kids and to the parents. We had a couple residents come up and give us an earful, her and then myself, because I was wearing my campaign stuff. But it's fun to go to those events, and it's good to see that they're getting bigger. Code enforcement, I'm on a Clean and Beautiful Committee. I was out awarding Clean and Beautiful Yards, and man, there's a lot of bad ones out throughout the city. It's getting harder and harder to find them. And then when you find the good one, they complain about their neighbors and, you know, and stuff. So I think we still need to work on, on the code enforcement, giving them whatever tools they need to make it maybe their jobs faster, easier, to do more reporting of these. And then it's a sad day for West Valley City with the Grizzlies leaving. I know Councilman Christian and his family were regular supporters of it. I've been to lots of games, and it's a sad day. It's not a surprise, but it's a very sad day for West Valley City. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Speaker six.
Hi, I'm Morgan Golightly. I'm a former resident of West Valley City and also a local artist, often employed by West Valley Arts. I'm here today in support of West Valley Arts and consideration for appropriation funds. West Valley Arts has become a cornerstone of stability and identity for our city. The theater has been central to building what residents recognize as a superiority, a superior quality of life here. West Valley Arts invests into the community by providing theater exhibitions, youth programs, outreach initiatives that weave culture into everyday life across our growing diverse region. The theater brings in talent from across Utah and beyond while showcasing local artists and theater makers. Through these performances, exhibits, youth programs, and community events, residents of all backgrounds connect through shared stories, creating cultural cohesion and civic pride. When we faced closure at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, community members rallied, and you rallied with us. Your decision to see the value in what we bring to the community and us keeping our theater open and running ensured the theater's continuity and preserved its role as a cultural anchor. Your support and partnership showed our community that its local leadership listens and cares, and it's been a beautiful thing to see the arts bring us all together. When West Valley Arts invests in, or when West Valley Arts invests in theater and community arts, it does more than entertain, it builds roots. It fosters belonging, stability, civic engagement, and shared pride. It keeps local artists' families and our youth emotionally tied to the place they live. It's why I still, it's why I'm still here. It strengthens intergenerational bonds and our cultural identity. By investing in theater and cultural programming, West Valley City isn't funding luxuries. It's investing in deep, stable roots for current and future residents. It's creating a city people come to love, invest in, and call home for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker seven.
Mayor and members of the council, I just shook your hands, but I did want to take a minute to thank you as a representative and as one of the organizers of National Night Out in the city for many, many years. I moved in, oh, twenty-five-something years ago into the city and was, as I met my neighbors and got to know them, I found out that there was a park that was supposed to be built in our neighborhood, that hadn't been built, and we worked with the city to get that park built. And it's now been a hub and an important gathering place for the members of our neighborhood. And that's where we've been hosting the National Night Out block parties for fifteen or so years now, maybe not quite fifteen. But I'm grateful for the support that we've received from the city and for the availability to reach out and to, to contact each of you, as well as members of the, of the staff in the city. And especially wanted to thank the members of the, with the neighborhood. I've forgotten their titles, but they're here. Alex Kidd and Craig Thomas and past members in their, in their office with the Neighborhood Relations, I think, maybe is that? They have been so supportive of us and helped us organize and, and has supported us, as well as different members in the police department. We're so grateful for the, again, the support and the proactive nature and the living here in the city has been. I'm grateful and, and proud to say that I'm a resident of West Valley City, and I'm grateful that we are progressive, that we look, that we, we look ahead and plan and, and also have many things like the National Night Out that brings communities together, that helps rid of unwanted elements, mostly by knitting together our neighborhoods more tightly. So thank you for your support. I'm grateful that we have people like Craig Thomas and Alex Kidd in that office that are doing regular outreach and supporting our neighborhoods, as well as the interactions that are available, like the public comments tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Hey, was there anyone else who wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? And give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Clark Bullen. I live in Murray City, Utah, five zero five one South Treetop Circle. So like I said, I'm not a resident of West Valley Arts, but I am a patron. And I mean, I'm not a resident of West Valley City, but I'm a patron of West Valley Arts. Sometimes I feel like a resident of West Valley Arts. I, I got involved in Murray politics about four years ago to save the Murray Theater. And we rallied the citizens, and the council caught the vision of what the Murray Theater could be and what it could mean for the city. And there have been times during the last few years when the mayor and council had second thoughts, like, why were they spending money on the arts? But now they're so glad they did. Everyone is super excited about the grand opening on September twenty-sixth, and it has become the centerpiece of our downtown revitalization efforts in Murray. You have vision that is required of a council person. You gave West Valley Arts a shot last summer. I know you have a vision for what you want the Maverick Center to be. You're going to continue to invest in its success despite what might happen to the Grizzlies. Can you see what this theater could be for this city? The economic impact that it's going to have? What it will do to revitalize this area? The identity, character, and soul it creates, the sense of place that it has? You can't buy an organization like this. You're very lucky to have it. You can't just buy it away like somebody wants to do to the Grizzlies, right? Like, this is a special thing that you have here in West Valley. Have you heard about the type of player that you build a team around? This is the type of organization, this is the type of, of community that you build a city around. If you've seen a show, you've seen the magic that an organization like this can bring. I'm actually running for city council in, in Murray, and so I should probably be out canvassing tonight since ballots dropped. Don't forget to vote, everyone. But I couldn't pass up the opportunity to come and tell you what I see for West Valley Arts and what it could mean for this city. A good council member has a vision of what their city can be, and you've shown that vision. And I want to be a city council member for Murray like you are for West Valley City. And I, a city council member that can see the potential of not just a theater, but a pivotal part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak? Name and address, please.
My name is Liz Whitaker. I'm a former resident of West Valley City, currently living at seventeen fifty-eight North Nine Eighty West in Orem. I would like to add my voice in support of West Valley Arts. The first governor of our state, Brigham Young, once said, "Upon the stage of a theater can be represented in character, evil and its consequences, good and its happy results and rewards, the weaknesses and follies of man, the magnanimity of virtue and the greatness of truth. The stage can be made to aid the pulpit in impressing upon the minds of a community an enlightened sense of a virtuous life, also a proper horror of the enormity of sin and a just dread of its consequences. The path of sin with its thorns and pitfalls, its gains and snares, can be revealed and how to shun it." Regardless of any of our own personal history or relationship with Brigham Young or the pulpit in general, theater is a teacher that builds community through cultural enrichment and economic impact. That economic impact is also not always immediate, and your continued support gives the theater time to become self-sufficient. I encourage you to continue to work with West Valley Arts to build community and appropriate the requested funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak?
Aloha, ahi ahi. Good evening. My name is Janzel Tudor. I live at 2567 West Easton Street in Taylorsville, Utah, just your neighbor. I also am proud to serve as a member of the board for West Valley Arts. But I'm here tonight also as a mother, as a performer, as someone whose life has been deeply shaped by theater. I was born and raised in Hawaii and didn't grow up doing theater. It's not like here in Utah. I found it later in, in life, in high school, and it changed everything. Theater gave me confidence, expression, community. It gave me a place to belong. When I met my husband in college, I was lucky enough to find someone who shared that same love. And I began to dream, not of Broadway or of big stages, but of one day performing alongside him and of my family and my children. For a long time, it felt like that dream wouldn't happen. My kids were just not interested. And I didn't want to push them into something that was my passion and not theirs. So I tried to let it go. But as time went on, something wonderful changed. They saw us perform. They saw the joy on the stage, the connection behind the scenes, the magic that happens when a cast becomes a family. They watched theater done well, right here in this city, and something lit up inside them. Eventually, they stepped into the spotlight themselves and now they are theater kids. My dream came true, not because I made it happen, but because this community made it possible. That's what this theater brings to West Valley, vibrance and stability. Vibrance because it breathes life into our community, not just through shows, but through camps and classes, friendships and family memories, music and movement and meaning. And stability because this is more than a stage. It's a safe place for kids to grow and discover who they are. A place where families like mine build traditions, a place that makes people want to stay. The community fought to save this theater because it matters. And now we're asking you to help sustain it. So it can help keep doing what it does best, bringing people together, creating joy and changing lives in ways you may never fully see, but that matter more than you know. We just don't want to preserve the building. We want to preserve the heart. Thank you for your time and for believing in the story we're still writing together.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Jake Fitzsimmons, 4220 South, 4850 West. I'm here with my daughter, Mwana, tonight practicing our citizenship. We're grateful and extremely grateful to be residents of West Valley City. Similar to Janzel, I didn't grow up with theater in my life. We, my wife and I got married and moved to West Valley City 20 years ago this year. And as a wedding present, a neighbor of ours, Sister Sally Hale, my Sunday school teacher, gave us season tickets to the theater. And we have been to every single show that has ever been in the West Valley Theater, formerly Hale Center Theater for the last 20 years. Theater is amazing. It's beautiful. Although rugby and football and volleyball is what I was raised with and is still in my blood, theater is definitely something that has touched our family in so many positive ways. And as many others here today have already spoken, the other benefits to having a wonderful theater and performing arts programming in our community have been well explained. And hope that we all continue to see the continued return on investment, the continued benefits to all members of our community and adjacent communities. And probably it's been mentioned by others, one of the best. This stands out not just in our city, but in the state and the nation. So this is a great thing to have around. I respect you all so much for the hard work that you do. Representing so many residents that comprise the second largest city in Utah is not an easy feat. And I just wanted to salute you all for the work that you do and for the way that you represent so many diverse and different, often contrasting opinions. Thank you for the service that you serve, that you render for all of us. And thank you for supporting performing arts in our city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Lauren Slagowski. I am not a resident of West Valley City, but I am a member of your community in that I have been employed through West Valley Performing Arts Center and spent my tax dollars here and spent a great deal of time here outside of my community. I had not planned to speak today. I'm not a public speaker, so please forgive me. I will, I will let you know as a, a personal revelation that it is, it is no secret that we live in very frightening times for many people today. And three months ago, my partner, as an immigrant of color and as a direct result of the turmoil that's going on in the country today, committed suicide. And I will let you know that theater, not just West Valley Performing Arts Center, but theater in itself has been a great reason for me to continue. It is no secret that in times of turmoil, people look to their elected leaders to not only balance a budget, but to show that they stand for the people that they represent as human beings and people who need support and encouragement in these hard times. And it has been a herald of theater throughout the ages that in times of need, it has provided a place for the disenfranchised to fill fellowship, for the underrepresented to find representation in community, for those who experience injustice to find a voice in justice, and for those who feel hopeless to find hope and continue to find trust in institutions that they feel may not be providing justice anymore. Theater is such a valuable part of your community, not just for what it brings in financially, but for what it offers to the people that you represent. I was a previous resident of West Valley City and continue to come here because of theater. And I will let you know that not only as, it has been a personal thing that has allowed me to continue to not only believe in continuing to live, but to believe in this country, it also continues to create greater ripples throughout your community that invite people here, not just because they live here and are invested in here, but because they are looking for something that will provide them hope and a reason to continue and a reason to continue to form community with one another and find the things that unite us together and not just divide us. And I would urge you to continue your support of the theater, not just as a financial addition to this community, but as a way to stand for your people and especially a way to stand for the people that you represent that are most in need of your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a minute fifty left.
Okay. I don't have much to say. Just don't give up on us yet. Stick with us. Give us your vote. And we, like you expect us to give you ours. We need yours. And we need to share it together because we are a community. And that's what we're all about. Even with those people who we took pictures of and gave awards to, they were community. And that's what we are. Please stick with us. I love our theater with all my heart. I appreciate you and it's good to be back. Thank you for all you do.
Hey, thank you. Anybody want to take the last one minute? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment. And is there anyone on the council would like to speak? Okay, we'll go on to our resolutions. We'll begin with resolution 25-100. Approve a funding amendment to a cooperative agreement between the city and Utah Department of Transportation. This is a modification to an existing cooperative agreement to increase the amount of state funding available for use on the 3,500 South Safed Sidewalk Project near 5430 West. The city will be receiving an additional $161,000 for this program. So to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 25-100.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now go to Resolution 25-101. Award a contract to Morgan Pavement Maintenance for the 2025, excuse me, asphalt pavement preservation treatment project. This would award a contract to Morgan Pavement Maintenance for an asphalt pavement treatment product that will treat approximately 11 miles of roadway throughout the city. The total cost will be $450,000 from our Class C road fund and transportation tax, state tax. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 25-101.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now go to 25-102. Award a contract to EDA Architects Incorporated to prepare cost estimates and renderings for the Maverick Center. This resolution authorizes the procurement of architectural services from EDA Architects in the amount of $307,000 for the cost estimate of the Maverick Center renovation. The funding for this project is from the Olympic and Paralympic Venues Grant Fund. To the council for discussion or a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 25-102.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to 25-103. Award a contract to Landmark Design Incorporated to prepare a parks, or master plan. This request is for the Parks and Recreation Department to perform a master plan to provide guidance and direction for the development and improvement of current and future parks and recreation facilities. The total cost is $103,640. To the council for discussion or a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 25-103.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
No.
Councilmember Whitestone?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We'll now go to our news business, which is Resolution 25-104. Authorize West Valley City's consent to the sale of the Utah Grizzly Hockey Club to Pro Hockey Partners LLC. The Utah Grizzlies are being sold to Pro Hockey Partners LLC and moving out of the Maverick Center. West Valley City is a minority shareholder in one of the assets of the Grizzlies. If the city were to decline to pass this consent agreement, the remaining shareholders would still be able to relocate the team. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve a new business 25-104.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Reluctantly, but yes.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session this evening. We do have two other short meetings following adjournment of this meeting for the redevelopment agency and the housing authority. So for this body, we have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you. Who's first? Redevelopment? Redevelopment's first.
Okay, a call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of July 22nd, 2025. It is 7:14 PM and we are here in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. I will note that all members of the agency are present and we've already had our opening ceremony this evening. We have our minutes of June 10th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one resolution, Resolution 25-07. This resolution would approve an agreement between the redevelopment agency and DT Redevelopment to provide land planning and design services to assist staff and council in formulating a plan for disposition and development of the JRM property located approximately 1200 West and 33rd South. I'll turn the time over to the agency for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 25-07.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Nicole, will you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay, I'll call to order the meeting of the housing authority. We'll note that opening ceremony has already taken place and all members of the housing authority are present. We have before us the minutes of June 10th, 2025. I'll turn it to the authority for discussion or motion.
Motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one item resolution. Excuse me, two items. First item is Resolution 2505, which is an acceptance assignment and assumption agreement with Utah Nonprofit Housing Corporation. And this is a, will allow the assumption of ownership of the Jared Allen Campbell Apartments. Turn it to the authority for discussion or motion.
I would move for approval of Resolution 25-05.
Second.
A motion and a second. Turn it to Ms. Kamic for a roll call.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Whitestone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Second item is Resolution 25-06. This resolution would authorize the transfer of properties located at 2941 West Amherst Avenue and 4110 Glen, Spring Glen Street to Housing Connect. Turn it to the authority for a discussion or a motion.
Move for approval of Resolution 25-06.
Second.
Motion and a second. Turn it to Ms. Kamic for a roll call.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And Chairperson Whitestone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Accept a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.